Six oh five.
We should go.
Right, so I've called the Callas Select Board meeting to order. Do you want to call your guys to order?
I'm gonna call the Callas School Board meeting to order.
And public comment on items not on the agenda. Additions or changes. And just so you know, the Select Board is usually a little more interactive with people that come to the meetings. You know, we don't make them wait till the beginning or the end to speak. But I would ask if people have something to say that we only have an hour, so make it brief and to the point. It'd be really helpful. Okay, you said CAP has info on the trash thing, so should we flip the order of talking about stuff?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, so let's talk about Act 46 first. I just don't want to lose sight of having time to talk about that issue as well. So thank you for coming. Should we go around the room and introduce ourselves to people who don't know? If that makes sense. Okay. Mace Wheeler, Select Board.
I'm Katie Lynn Caris, the Recording Secretary.
Cliff Emmons, Callas Select Board.
Rose Calchuck, Select Board.
I'm Chris Catteratt, on the School Board.
Rick.
Rick Purchase.
Gail Graham.
Scott Bassidge.
Janet Ansel.
David Delport from the Feds Arts.
Scott Thompson, from the U-32 Board.
Rick Keen, Callas Board, School Board.
This is Anna Culver, CAP's Board.
John Breivand, Callas Select Board, and Judy.
Judy Robert Camper.
And this is Jerome from Orca.
We'll be calling.
Right. I wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure I was gonna say it right, so I started with the first name. So, what's going on with Act 46? What can we do to help?
Well, related, I mean, just to kick it off, I mean, it seems like as of in August, we will be really facing a decision about whether it's likely that our, you know, our proposal would be accepted, the alternative proposal, put in by all five towns.
Well, maybe you could back up a little bit. Does Callas School Board or the certain union submitted an alternative governance plan?
That's right. It's an alternative governments, the governor government, the governance option. Other than what was pushed by the AOE and by the legislature, the preferred model, which does not work for us.
Hold on a second. I think Gail and Janet are struggling to hear. If you guys want to pull your chairs up. You can be, and anyone else. I'm not playing favorites with the women.
Turn the fan off if hearing is on.
We can turn the fan off if people are having trouble hearing.
Just speak to them. Fan stays.
We can also open the door if they do.
Jerome, if you open that door, would that help, do you think?
Okay.
The bugs are gonna come in.
Well.
They'll get Jerome first.
So anyways, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rick.
So essentially, what happened was this, you know, we were tasked, it's been a very lopsided process, you know, to actually push through a single universal model, which kind of works for Chittenden Town County-type suburban towns. And certain towns with a lot of wealth and larger economies, but smaller towns can be really victimized by this. And what's happened is, at this point, you know, the, the Agency of Education and the State School Board, they can essentially impose this. We actually went out and did, we did a study for a few years, two and a half years probably, on whether that preferred model, which is what was being, you know, pushed down on us, would work. And all five towns unanimously basically reject, rejected that in the boards. We never even put it out for a vote, but the boards, there was much discussion. We turned that thing inside out and it just didn't work. We created a proposal.
If I may, just for clarity's sake.
Do it.
That merger study committee that went on, you know, basically as long as you were talking.
Right.
The, the, this committee did not recommend merger. It wasn't unanimously not recommending merger. It was, I remember we had the,
That's true.
What was unanimous was every board approved the alternative governance structure.
And that's what, and that's what you submitted to the AOE?
Right. And they, and they have, at this point, AOE rejected that. Their recommendation is that with a, you know, after a lot of work by all of the towns, and the unanimous recommendation of the five towns plus the consolidated high school, that they rejected that out of hand and said, no, we're going, you know, basically, we recommend the preferred model. So now this goes.
But what, what was their reason for that?
Well, go ahead, Scott. Do you want to get the email?
Well, this is just a recommendation. This is not a decision.
It's not, but this is.
You can see the writing on the wall.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, essentially, the, the Agency of Education rejected our arguments. They, and leaned on sort of the, what I'm tempted to call, and I guess what I now will call, the, the dogma of consolidation, that, you know, a consolidated system is the best means for achieving the goals of Act 46. You know, the equity, equality, efficiency, transparency, and value. What our, what our alternative proposal had argued was that because, especially because of the problem of our legacy debt in among the five towns, that this, the transition from our present system to a merged system, which is essentially, you know, all town lines are abolished, and we become one great big sort of super town. What would happen in this case is that, that there would be a, a shifting of costs from higher wealth to lower wealth towns. The higher wealth, especially Eastmont Pelier. But, you know, I, I'm not putting anything on Eastmont Pelier because they actually agreed that this was unfair. That Callas and Worcester should pay for their, their bond.
When you say a shifting of costs, it's actually, you said, from the higher wealth to the, it's actually from the, the shifting of wealth goes from the lower,
Sorry, thank you.
The lower wealth to the higher wealth.
Exactly. The shifting of the burden is from higher to lower. Shifting of, of wealth is, or shifting of resources is from the lower wealth to the higher wealth town.
So what, three towns have a total debt of about 15 million?
Correct, yeah.
That that would then be spread out and shared within all of the towns, regardless of whether or not we have debt or not. So we would take on their debt.
How is that, I don't even understand how they can do that, how that is.
We have to vote to agree to it. I don't think the state's gonna be able to force that on us.
Well, it's, um, there's so many questions, yeah. There's so many questions associated with this. But the problem is that our, our argument was that this landed us in a kind of paradox. We could have equity, but then we wouldn't have efficiency. Because in order to achieve an equitable solution to the debt problem for a merged district, and oh God, I'm, I'm the world's worst explainer, so forgive me. In order to achieve an equitable solution, Eastmont Pelier's debt would have to be in the same proportion to the overall debt as Eastmont Pelier's student population is to the overall student population, since that's how costs are distributed.
Sounds complicated.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and it's.
You're doing a fine job.
You're doing fine. It's just complicated to begin with.
So because Eastmont Pelier's debt is twice as big as its share of student population, basically, what we would have to do in order to devise an equitable solution is, there are a number of possible, I, I've been able to come up with three possible solutions. One of which is the one that Janet got through in 2017. Transferring the bond from school to town. But there are two other ways in which, which involve essentially either bond and buy, that is, the new merged district would bond about $9 million and then buy each school in order to provide the restitution, to basically fix the, the damage done by this cost shifting. Or alternatively, it would be a sell and lease back arrangement whereby schools, school property would transfer in all the towns. It'd have to happen in all the towns except for Eastmont Pelier. Eastmont Pelier could do it too, but at least the other four. And in that way, what you could do, if, if the property were transferred from the school district to the town, and then were leased back to the new merged school district, you could essentially build it in so that Callas and Worcester, and now Berlin and Middlesex as well, would be reimbursed the amount that it would take to compensate for the extra subsidies that they would otherwise have been paying. So that essentially, in that scenario, all of our property taxes would rise to the level of Eastmont Pelier's. Eastmont, that would be, however, the, the towns would be able to potentially lower their taxes so that school plus town taxes would remain constant. School taxes would go up, but for Callas and Worcester, and to some degree also for Middlesex and Berlin, town taxes would go down. And overall.
Town or school?
School taxes would all go up to the same level, the level of Eastmont Pelier's.
So you're looking at saying, bring out the Callas, the school taxes, and lower the town taxes, combine them and have the same.
But the school and the state don't get to set the town tax rate like this. We do.
Right, but, but here's the thing. For example, in, in this scenario, Callas School would be leased back to, to the new merged district for roughly $300,000 per year base, just to cover that, that subsidy amount. And then whatever else is negotiated for, you know, typical lease type costs. Eastmont Pelier would be leased back for zero. So that $300,000.
But they don't own the school.
Simply doesn't own the school.
No, I'm saying, how, I don't know how they can, we can, how they can lease back something they don't own.
They do own it.
The town owns the school.
Well, Eastmont Pelier town then, whatever they.
No, for Callas School.
Right.
How could they lease back something?
We have to vote this all through. This isn't just.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a good solution.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to explain.
I'm just trying to understand how.
To agree to this.
It's really, it's really convoluted.
This is only a piece of the puzzle. This is to solve only the debt, if we are forced to consolidate.
And then there's the, but there's also the things like the school closure issue, and, you know, you don't, the way these, this super board is arranged, I mean, the town essentially, that's based upon the population, the student population. We would have much lower representation than say, probably two towns would control all the decision making.
Right, and that's the problem.
On that board, and the townspeople of Callas have, if they decide to close Callas, which they will, I mean, I've, ultimately, that will, because it will, they'll fill their capacity, Eastmont Pelier, it would be their financial advantage to do that. That, you know, we really would have no recourse. I mean, I don't care if people talk about the Articles of Agreement, but we asked a lawyer in the 706B discussion, I asked a specific question, and he said you couldn't write those in a way that you could tie the hands of future.
What financial advantage would it be for us to, to, Eastmont Pelier, to close Callas and send the kids over there?
Wouldn't be to our, it wouldn't be to our advantage. I mean, we're going to be paying higher taxes under this scenario.
Well, okay, so if the tax, if the taxes can be fixed, and I'm just wondering how Eastmont Pelier benefits monetarily. I just, you made a statement I'd like to hear.
We're covering that debt, but then we're also, there's another side of this.
But if we figure out how to cover the debt.
There's another side of this. What happens is that you also, you know, you were trying to keep, you know, a healthy community here. You take a school away, the families, the, those people with kids are gonna get to close to the schools as they can go. That's going to push them into Eastmont Pelier's, push those property values up. Our is getting pushed down. We have, we have a harder time bringing kids, if you're a family, if you have kids in our communities. It's a big hardship. I mean, we've raised kids. You know what it is to be able, if you're far from a school and you're, but you have two working parents, that's a big issue, to be able to get to them and, and arrange logistics.
And I'm not a proponent of, of closing the school. I'm just saying, we would still have a school. We would just rename Eastmont Pelier like Cow Pelier. And, and it would then become the school for the community. You might have a longer distance to drive, but it still would be the community school.
But under that scenario, closing the Callas supplementary, under that scenario, Scott's leaseback program is, is not something that's available, as I understand it. Because the school would be out of the system. There's nothing to lease back to the district.
It wouldn't happen at the same time. I mean, that's years down the road.
The problem is, we'd have, we'd have, we'd lose.
Again, it wouldn't happen at the same time.
The towns with the, the greater number of voters, I guess, would have the greater, greater sway. And another town essentially could close our school.
Right.
Right.
And I, I think there's a huge constitutional issue here. I brought this up. I, I mean, years ago, Janet came to our Select Board when Gay Somington had something similar. And I said, it's a constitutional issue. The state cannot force our schools to close, and other towns cannot vote to, to close or to augment, cannot vote to do anything with property that we own and hold. We own that property in fee simple title. And for the state to think that they're gonna come in and they're gonna take control, or the vote of Middlesex and Berlin, or some other, some other towns are gonna vote the future of a school that we own.
I don't see how they can legally do that. I really don't.
I think we go to a charter school. If that, if that happens, I think that's another.
Well, I think what we have to do is, they, they clearly think they can. I think we all have to get, get, and get ready for a big legal battle. I mean, I think we're gonna have to take this to court. And, you know, we met this weekend with a group of other towns who are in the same boat as we are. And they were talking about options, and they're fairly limited out there, what to do, but. I mean, one discussion that I had, and I'm actually quite interested in, they actually, and this was North Bannington, and they successfully discontinued their school and started it, restarted it as an independent. And it operates within the SU actually, you know, they still access special ed funding and resources, and then they pay for certain sources out of the SU, but they're an independent. You know, they retain control, so we may want to consider this. I hate to do that. I'm a big proponent of public education. But this is going, this is really going south on us, the way, and the way it has been managed, is more something you would expect from a fascist government rather than a, certainly a democracy, and it's so far from, you know, Vermont governance models. I mean, I'm astounded that the, that the legislature would ever even consider this. You know, I, you now have a glad.
You know, this state has a policy on, on energy. We're trying to go local with our food, go local with our energy generation. You know, reduce our driver miles by carpooling and everything else that, that we can come up. And then when it comes to schools, we're gonna bust them. And what's going on for Rochester, busting them over the mountain, over Brandon Mountain, to the other, to another watershed. I mean, it is, in the winter, on that crazy road over Brandon, I mean.
Yeah.
They are out of their minds, and they partition, and they disconnect it from, you know, an overarching concept in terms of what's best for our people. There, this is just.
I think, you know, what is really egregious about it is that people have been saying this, and many people, you know, hundreds of them, opposing this and giving these facts. And Janet, you've heard it, you know, I've been in a lot of those hearings. I've done it even myself. And it's come following on deaf ears. I mean, it has been deaf ears. I don't understand what's driving that. But I tell you one thing, it's not okay with me. I, you know, we'll, I suggest what we do as a town, I mean, we can either roll over and just let this happen. Or we get out and we fight them right to the end, and we take them to court, and, you know, probably, you know, there were several lawyers in this meeting. We've actually been donating their time even, you know, but that, you know, but, you know, they're even looking for.
People have been led to believe that this is going to fix the runaway cost of schools.
There are a lot of people out there.
The studies have shown that.
And it's not.
I don't tell me. I know exactly what they're saying.
That's why they're gung ho about it.
We've been educating.
Because that's what they think.
Yeah, but there are a lot of people, you know, giving the other, the contrary information. It's just been ignored, and it has been squashed. You know, that's what is bad here. It's one thing to go in with incomplete information. And when you've got AOE and groups like that, that are heavy lobby presence, I mean, my God, you don't see Rebecca Holcomb out in the communities. Have you ever seen her anywhere?
She resigned.
Yeah, I know, but you know what I'm talking, not promoting this process. You'd see her every day in those halls and people, and that's, unfortunately, you know, that's the way this goes.
So, do Callas Select Board members have any other questions? I mean, I've attended some of the meetings, and some of the other board members have too.
Yeah, so I did attend the last meeting. It was held at U-32, and it was informative, and, I, you know, I just want to say, I applaud the work of our local school board and Scott. And I agree that this is totally not okay. So what's the plan for August 15th? Because that's the date that they're gonna review our appeal or.
And who is the day? I need to know where the evidence is.
Well, that's the deadline for all the submissions, the resubmissions, right?
That's what, we have to have a hearing. We have a hearing.
So we have to have a resubmission for August 15th?
Well, there, there's a one pager. The State Board has asked for one page answer to, I think, four questions. We might have to go over a page, or at least do a page and then have backup.
Or we'll get an F, right?
We'll get an F, we'll go over a page.
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna get an F regardless.
But we have some work on that.
It's sort of set up.
You do have, okay.
Yeah, we do.
It's the State Board, and that's not the Agency of Education.
Well, they're.
They're all the same.
They're, they're very tight. They're not the same, but they're, my own assessment, my own read from the meetings that I've attended is that the State Board will be inclined to do what it's told.
Now, is this the, is this the group that was formed? You, you weren't there and you got picked to help?
Oh, I, yeah.
Is that, is this the one?
That's the one, the three musketeers, yeah.
Okay.
Martin.
Janet?
And Flora.
I'm sorry. I just, that's okay. I just wanted to add something about the, the Act 49 that passed last year, which was intended to make it easier and a little more clear how you did an alternative governance structure, which is what we're in right now. And one of the things I managed to get added to that was language that said that one of the considerations would be a wide disparity in debt. AOE opposed it pretty aggressively, but it did pass. The governor signed it. And as far as I can tell, the agency ignored it.
Yes, yes.
In their report, because I read the, almost all of it, read all the Callas, the Washington Central part of it. So I don't know whether it's gonna do any good, but I am gonna write a letter to the State Board pointing that out.
Thank you.
And it's not just that they ignored the alternative governance structure debt language, but they also ignored the language in the underlying statute that you're talking about.
Yes.
Which I can't remember it said. I thought the language was a little more broad, but to go back to that early discussion, I think that there has been, for the last year, room for communities to come to some different arrangement on debt. And, but, you know, they're not, none of them are ideal, and none of them are simple. But they're, but they're there.
I have a question for you. Who's running the show in there? You, the legislature, really, I mean, they, the AOE should not be dictating to the legislature what the hell's going on here. I'm sorry, this is.
They ignored what we did. They didn't dictate.
Well, I'm sorry, but, you know, this is a democracy here, and I, you know, maybe I'm out of line, but I've watched this now for years. You know, I've been in this since before this was a fight, Scott and I, and, you know, I have been astounded how little backbone I've seen. And certainly blindness from Dave Sharp, and these are people I worked with in the past, and in the, and bailed out of troubles, you know, when they were in Addison County and things like that. And I look, you know, in the complete deafness, and I'd like to know what was driving that decision making. Because it's clearly not going to save money. It is clearly not gonna really help the kids in any way. I mean, wherever it's been done, it's been a disaster. I know I've talked to the people, the states that did it. And I tell you, I can line those people up for you. I offered to, but nobody even wanted to listen. You know, but that's the, this is the reality. Why did you let this happen? I mean, they should not be dictating these rules and these conditions. I mean, this is way out of control. This, you guys have let us down in a big way. I say those are harsh words, but I'm, I'm understating them, believe me, in my opinion.
Well, let's hope the legislators, if they think there's a, you know, unreasonable interpretation of the law, or they, they've limited the flexibility that was provided, let's hope the legislature, that can, those who control it stand up to this. I'm just not confident, because there's a divide in the, in those that control the legislature. There are a whole bunch of Dems who run, run that legislature, who think this is really cool. And it's great. And, you know, this is just like I see in environmental stuff. There's the urban environmentalists who have their perspective on what protecting the environment is, that mean taking the beer can, putting it in the recycling bin instead of the trash can. That's environmentalism to an urban person. And they're, these people are fine with big, huge school districts. They graduated in classes of 2,000 students, you know.
Yeah.
They, they worked for them. They went to Columbia or Yale, and so, you know, we're going to lose the soul of Vermont. This is just, this dismantling of our rural culture and.
Well, you know, we're getting, I mean, we hear all this screaming about these things are relevant in this state.
These schools are one of the last vestiges of our little towns. You know, there's a threat at the federal level, our rural post offices. Then we're, there's a threat now at the state level to close our rural schools. I don't know what we're gonna have left. You know, a town meeting will be the last thing to go.
It's getting harder and harder to try.
But we're having to pay people to come live here. And, and the debt.
No, we're not. That's a crazy idea. That's not.
No one can argue that costs, no one can argue that costs are becoming very, very difficult.
But you know what? They're paying people to come live here, and that's just craziness.
Well, they're not paying. First of all, that's not a proposal. No one's paying anyone to.
But taxes are too high.
Are they, that instituted?
They're taxes. Taxes are too high, and we have to, we have to figure it out. You know, I'm not saying that all this is correct. I'm just saying that we have to figure out a better way to do what we're doing. We can keep plugging ahead and ignore everything and just say, I want to keep the school that I went to school at, because I went there and I have fond memories.
You know what this is about. That's not what this is about. The taxes here, I grew up on Long Island. My mother, my retired mom, 94 years old, pays $16,000 in property taxes for a house that my dad built for $25,000, including the property, in 1955. Their house is valued at like $400,000. It's not worth a million dollars. She's paying $16,000 in property taxes. Most of that is school taxes. So, and, and I have friends in Connecticut and friends in California.
Maryland.
And, but the issue is, the taxes are high relative to our income. And there's a big, larger issue here. The wage here is terrible. And the taxes are high relative to our income. Down there, they make gobs of money. They don't care about a $16,000 tax bill. But to say just unequivocally, our taxes are high, our taxes are very low. It's just that our wages and our incomes are also much lower.
Okay, if you look at the whole picture.
You gotta look at the whole picture.
It's very difficult. I'll say the taxes, please.
At that drug beat, when tax is high, they're not. Relative to income, they're high.
So I want to, I want to give other folks an opportunity to speak. Chris, did you have any? I mean, you're new to the School Board, so.
I, I have nothing to say at this time. I'm still trying to take it in. This is only my second meeting ever, so.
Oh, really? Oh, wow, for you. Welcome to Callas!
And my first one was the, the entire SU Board, so it was equally as, equally as overloading.
Gail, did you have anything quick to add to that?
Yeah, I have one question, clarification, along with everything else, but one of the latest things I've heard that if our school does close, the building is no longer ours. Is that true? I mean, there's, go ahead, Scott.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, if the merged district, as I understand it, if the merged district decides no longer to use a building, they turn it over to the town for basically a dog.
Well, they don't own it.
They don't, well.
We own our building. We're renters.
The problem is, it's a huge dog.
Well, they're gonna take what they want, but they should do deeds, and the deed is very clear. We bought it. We own it. It's actually in the town of Callas's name. It's not in some school entity's name. It's in the town of Callas's name. So if they want to buy it from us first, so they can own it and then give it back to us for a dollar, for a dollar, we can have that conversation. They do not own it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The chain of title is clear.
But if they were to give it back to us, it could be used as a community center, as a rec center. There would be multiple uses.
Rick?
Is there a rumor?
Are you?
I basically just came to learn, I've heard bits and pieces of this conversation. I'm very concerned about taxes. I think they're high. If you're retired from a Vermont business and you never made a great fortune and when you sold your business, you didn't make a fortune again, then you're worried about high taxes. And they just drift up every year and doesn't seem to matter. Everybody at town meeting, oh, you know, we want all that. And the school particularly. So I'm, I'm on the verge of, you know, being at, needing to move somewhere else to lower my overhead, basically.
To that, I'd say this, though, you know, having been on a board, the vice chair of the board for six years in the past and then has been involved with that school heavily ever since. I mean, there's local boards with elected officials who go in front of town meetings. They are pretty, they control that cost as much as they can and they keep that reasonable. I will guarantee you, and this is what I heard from like the main people I talked to, the second they consolidate, you've lost that, you've lost that check. You have no voice and the costs spiral upward because there's nothing. And they said, they also said universally accountability went to nothing.
And they wouldn't even have much to say about what goes on at U thirty-two because.
You don't, you think.
It's a bigger group.
Right. And just imagine that.
You know, by, you'd think, I mean, that by efficiencies of scale, that should be cheaper. Why is it that, that's by far the highest cost per pupil? And there's a lot of waste in there. There is, you can't oversee, you know, there isn't the kind of oversight at that level that you've got down at the local boards. Assuming you're like good boards, if you don't, you know, it's garbage in, garbage out. It's cause and effect. The communities have the responsibility. It's like a select board, you know? You, if you put people in that aren't gonna manage well, you're gonna, it's gonna cost you.
Wanna give Scott and Sharon an opportunity and then we need to talk about trash.
We're not talking trash right now.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say something along those lines. Scott, did you have something you wanted to say?
So they impose this structure, but there's, there's agreements that go along with it. Could you talk to them about that, Scott?
There would have to be articles of agreement. And there are sort of standard default articles of agreement that we would not want. Would not be in our interest. So what we're trying to do, I mean, Rick is sort of outlining one or more alternative options that we could, we would try to keep open. One of those alternative options is to draw up variant articles of agreement in order to cover the debt problem in particular. Because that, I mean, that is clear and present danger, I think. And you can quantify it and it's, it's clear that if, if we don't solve that problem, we will go into this, you know, new merged system with bitterness and, and all kinds of bad vibes in psychology between the towns that will not lend itself to, to good management or, or, you know, relationships.
Well, he's a district.
I thought you said the articles of agreement though couldn't bind future boards.
That's quite bizarre, they could.
There's, there's one school of thought that says if the towns vote on the articles, the actual text of, of certain articles, and those articles might have to do, say, with closing schools or with distribution of, of legacy debt. If those texts are voted on by the townspeople, then they can only be changed by the townspeople in a, in a vote. That's a school of thought. However, there are other, I've heard other opinions express that, no, that wouldn't matter either.
So once you relinquish that power, that vote, you, the town is no longer, that's what the lawyer who, the seven oh six B.
I would call it the first term interpretation, but I don't.
Yeah, I think it would be at least.
That's what I understood.
I specifically asked the question at the seven oh six B here. They had to have a lawyer hired, you know, to come in and ask that. And I asked that exact question and he said, no. He said the base, I care, who was?
Giuliani.
Giuliani. And he came in and he just, you know, this, he said, no, any board in the future could, at their whim, could change those. And that means that if you've got, you know, two towns that are controlling all the votes, that there you go. You, any articles you put in place can be modified to their agreement.
But there would be sort of a moral bond that you would hope would.
Where it's been the morality in this process.
As long as it's instituted, I don't trust that.
All right, so I wanna give Sharon a chance to speak.
Yeah, thank you. So I think, I wanna echo Rosa's comments and just thank.
And this is Sharon with the Cal Slick.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I was seven minutes late and you guys were all finished eating and like deep into the talk.
Some of us didn't eat yet.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah.
I did. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing that the debt is a big issue. But one of the things that I worry about in this kind of a negotiation, if you will, is, is that, oh, you know, we've made a big issue with the debt, rightfully so, and that gets addressed. Oh, the debt's taken care of, you're not gonna own East Montpelier's debt or anybody else's debt. So I think what I haven't heard with any clarity is how do we feel about the issue? If the debt issue is moved aside and what position are we taking now so that we're clear perhaps? The debt's not the only issue. Because that is a solvable issue. And some of the other issues that we're talking about, the fundamental nature of the school in our community, which I agree with. I lived in this town for five years before I knew anybody and I started meeting you all when the kids started going to school.
Right. It's a huge community.
It's a huge community, yeah. And it's not, it's, you know, the debt can be solved, but, but we still have other concerns. So I wanna say that out loud.
Yeah, I don't think you can, I don't think you can solve the sense of community in any written document or anything. You just, the sense and the feeling and the stuff like that that's important is just gone and you can't, you can't get that back. Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe the debt can be solved. We've been working on it for two years. We don't have an answer, right?
I think it can. I think the articles of agreement can do something other than simply pulling the debt. Just not to say that it's easy to do or that it will be totally satisfactory. I mean, there are things that you have to take in account. You know, there may, there may be some consequences that, in terms of leasing and selling and transferring property.
So this is something we haven't tried yet because everything we've tried has.
There was language added last year to the, I don't know, the traditional model, whatever it is. I'm trying to call it the preferred model, the, the non-alternative model that allowed something other than pulling debt. And so that's been on the books since last year. And, and I think that there would be, if it said specifically bonding, I think there'd be room to do something like that. The agency opposed that language too. They opposed that language for the, you know, traditional merger and they opposed the language, which, so I got that language in and I also got the language in on the alternative model and they opposed that. So, so the report reads as though neither of those things exist, but they do.
So at what point, sorry, at what point do we say it's, it's solvable? And, and, and we know for certain, one hundred percent, that it is something that can be solved?
I will write up, I'll show you the solution. It's a mess. You will hate it, but, but it's, but it's the solution.
But, and it's something they're accepting?
So I would, no, they haven't accepted anything like that. But this Washington Central is a little bit unusual in terms of the disparity. Because I looked at all the other towns, other S U's to see how much disparity there was in S U's. And there are S U's, including merged ones, where there's a significant disparity, but not as much as there is in Washington Central. So nobody, nobody's done it yet, but I think that there is room to do it a hundred percent. You know, it's hard to know. But if, but if the, you know, if one avenue is to have a group of people figure out a solution that would be acceptable if that's where we end up, just so that we're not sort of saying, no, 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 and then realizing that we've got to figure something out.
But every time we put a solution out there to any problem, it's ignored. Or else they, they end run it with a new rule. I mean, that's been consistent through this whole process. I mean, it has been, it, it's, there's a, their eyes are on one point and one path.
I think if voters in the five communities voted for an alternative debt structure, they would agree with it. I, I don't, I can't think why they, there's.
They, they is who?
They being the state board. Ultimately, it's the state board.
As opposed to the agency of education, which disagrees right now.
Yeah, ultimately, it's the state board, but I agree with Scott. They're, they're basically staffed out of the agency, so they're definitely.
They're in bed.
Yeah, there's a division, but it's not as.
So all of this is gonna happen before the legislature goes back in session?
Yes.
So what are you prepared to do this legislative session if you don't get, it's just. I mean, what, I mean, you and other people there are obviously not in favor of this, so.
I mean, I can't, I can't, without knowing what's happening in August and what's gonna happen.
November.
It would be certainly easier to come up with a solution if, if the communities had actually voted. That would, you know, the fact that there wasn't a vote, I think, was one.
Yeah.
One weakness in our, in our proposal. And I understand why there wasn't, but I do think.
There was a very deliberate, at every one of the seven oh six B meetings, I said, we've gotta be out in the public, you know, educating them. We've gotta bring them. And there was a deliberate effort not to do that.
So we're gonna have to.
I wanna understand what Janet's point is, not the history, but your point is if there were, if the towns folks, if we had a special school board, school meeting, whatever you call it, town meeting, and we had a vote on a proposal and the townspeople in each town voted to support that proposal, the alternative proposal with the agreements and everything else Scott kind of talked about, then you think the likelihood is greater that it?
I think it's strength, the strength makes it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's an extremely important point and it raises a question whether we should try to get something for the November election.
Yeah, I think you should.
Well, we have to have this thing nailed down, like the, I think you ran towards scenarios of financing. You have to, the powers that be, you all, the collective needs to arrive at what they think the best scenario is and the most likely scenario to get passed, by the way. And it doesn't bias for or against any town. I think that's the one that's gonna get passed. And then we, that's gotta be run by the voters, like in November, as you say. And we can do that before the legislature comes back.
So you have to get the other towns to agree to that. Because we know what's gonna happen August fifteenth, they're gonna still say no. So I think we have to go with knowing that that's probably what's gonna happen and be planning for the next step. Because that's really gonna be the most important thing is to get the vote out.
I would say this, if we're going to put that vote out there, simultaneously, we are also putting out our clear message that we're going to court, if, you know, any legal means we can. And number two, you know, we look at discontinuing the school and we can begin the exploration starting. Let me hear you out. I know what I mean is, you know, an independent school. Because that, they can't really deal with that. And that shows that you're actually serious. I mean, I, the only reason I'm skeptical about this, skeptical is that we've done this in good faith.
Yeah.
All the towns in Vermont and by god, they've been railroaded.
I don't see, I don't see that process happening so quick that we have to do all that right now.
It takes about three months. I talked to the towns.
Well, you know, the attorney general is gonna have to get behind this and, you know, TJ is not a dummy. And I, I, I think when he gets down to what the reading of the law is and who owns what, I think he's gonna be thinking very long and hard about it.
Okay, I wanna, we're not gonna have time to talk about trash, which we need to. Gail, thirty seconds.
Just one comment. I'd like to make mention for those of us that attended the supervisory meeting a few weeks ago. And when Michael Dwayne, who happens to be from East Montpelier.
I'm an X A G.
Got up and I.
Staff on top of staff.
He was very, okay, you know.
We already, there's already too much staff at the supervisory union. That's where they need to start looking at where the dollars are.
That's where Michael's at.
Okay, so can we talk about trash? Do you wanna stay and talk about trash, Janet? So, so just a quick, just a brief history.
I'm now curious.
The town received a notice of violation for the dump on several different issues.
Our depot, it's not.
Yes, the.
Transfer station.
Transfer.
Transfer station. And we had Bruce Westcott from Salway's Management District come in and we got dung on the composting stuff, which we told them, never mind about this grow comp, what is it called? Grow compost?
Where the, the depot is serviced by grow, a private ended grow compost.
And they weren't necessarily coming and picking the stuff up as they were contracted to do so. John Braybant is now doing, picking up the compost.
I'm waiting for the phone call.
From who?
I was told grow was their last time.
Oh, that's right. Isn't it July, July is their last time?
I thought it was July eighth or something.
We'll have to check on the timing of that. But John Braybant offered to take that. But then we'd also talked about, you know, we talked, we looked at getting a grant to put up a fence. People in, in the East Callist and other areas didn't like the idea of a fence because it would look ugly. And we can't afford to have staff there to make sure people aren't dropping stuff off when they shouldn't. We got done because there was other stuff dumped there that shouldn't be there. There are, you know, rodents, those kinds of issues. So we thought, well, maybe we could talk to the school and see about the possibility of having the, I guess they call it fast trash?
Well, that's what we have right now. It's a fast trash, but it's on a different location.
Different locations?
Well, our, our current location is different than the school.
Right, right. So we just, we wanted to talk to the school about possibly having the Saturday pickup, which is like for three hours at the school. The school already has a dumpster and a composting dumpster. So, you know, we've, we've talked about, you know, cooperation and sharing and all those nice things. So we wanted to have that conversation with the school.
Well, to be clear, we're not talking about using a school dumpster, the, the fast trash.
No, no.
And then you would bring their truck.
For the compost.
No, well, no, they already have a compost.
No, but we talked about putting the compost in the.
In their compost, yes.
School's compost.
Right.
The Perrys who do the fast trash, they take it off site the same day.
Right.
So it would never be left at the school.
So they just show up with the truck and people bring bags?
Bring their bags, just like they do in East Montpelier at the WAC parking lot now.
Yeah, the former fire station.
Right. So we just wanted, we wanted to have that conversation because we have to get back to the state with this violation that they've noticed a violation that they gave us.
And, and the problem with the current site, it's, it's historically been, it actually was a landfill at one time. It's where the Calis trash used to go. And then it got closed to municipal trash and it was only a stump dump, as they call it. Brush and stumps and that kind of stuff, which wound up being, which wound up being building materials and all this illicit dumping and whether or not someone's there. And we have no way to control that. And even though we, we've ceased that and our highway crew doesn't dump over there any brush or anything any longer, we still have people backing up and dumping stuff and also leaving trash. Knowing that they will get picked up on Saturday, so we need to end that.
Are we gonna run into that issue at the school? Are we gonna transfer that problem to?
Well, I think that's the, I think the fact that they come with the truck and they leave, right now that.
That's what happens at your place right now.
No, but right now there's. But right now there's.
It's an old landfill.
It's an old landfill. There's a sign that says Callis Depot. There's the thing where they pull up so they can, you know, that, what is that? That boardwalk looking thing with the steps on it?
So you can get.
So you can put the stuff into the truck. That wouldn't be there. So that leaves, I mean, those signs there are like, it's like advertising that, you know, the trash gets picked up here.
I'd say there would be no.
The trash would be advertised to be picked up at the school. I think you would find people, not many, but I think the opportunity for people to drive by Friday night and go, oh, they'll be here tomorrow, just leave them.
Well, they could do that and then we'll say, we won't do this. We can try it and if it doesn't work, then we stop. If it's a problem with the school, it stops.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we do a, an exploratory?
We're just trying, we're proposing at very least try this as a test run. We don't have any permanent infrastructure that we, we need to maintain at our current location or we would need to dismantle. There's nothing there and it's just another one going from, from one location to another, from one parking lot to another. And if it doesn't work for the school, for whatever set of reasons, reasons have been thought about, then we'll just end it.
Or kind of another.
Right, and we've talked, we've talked to, we've talked to the Perrys and they don't care where they park their truck. Really. Really.
I was thinking over by the dumpsters in that corner, you know?
We could, I mean, I would, obviously, we don't have a corner, we could explore that, but we'd have to. With that caveat.
Well, you do have a corner, but. I would want, I would want you to, we would want you to put it on a future.
Can we do that?
School board agenda.
Yeah, we have, we have to check with our insurance and how that will work.
Well, the town insurance, we could cover it.
Right, the town.
And what we want to make sure, you know, that we're not.
Our insurance would still have to authorize it.
Probably, they probably have to have a waiver or something.
Yeah, we'd have to work that out, yeah.
We just have to make, you know, the concerns we've got, we've got young kids there, so we have to, you know, that has to be absolutely clean and, you know, we can't have people dumping like this. So that would be a major issue then.
Well, I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, if we can work together on this issue because we have to solve it, we have to get back to the state. It's already been since April.
And what do we, what do we need? We need a certain size parking lot and what? What do you need to be able to do?
Room enough for a truck to park.
Room enough to pick us a truck.
Room enough for people to be able to pull their cars up and unload them.
What size truck?
I mean, they do it in front of the Woodbury Fire Station.
Right, right.
Every Saturday.
So that much you're there?
Yeah, that's what you need.
There's more than enough for one of those lots.
Yeah. Scott?
What's the name of the guy that gave us demerits?
That gave us the number of the.
Demerits for the dump?
Bruce Westcott?
No, it wasn't Bruce, it was from the state, it was.
Well, my, my question was.
Deborah Pierce, I think is her name.
We had that sign up that says depot and we're registered and all this.
Right.
What if we just say, no, we're not a depot, we're not registered, we'll take the sign down, we'll ask, it's shameless to drive his truck there forever. Just cut them out.
I don't think people are going there because there's a sign, they're going there because they, their grandfather went there and they remember pitching it over the bank. There's no bank, I mean, they'd be pitching it on the soccer field in Callis. It is, this, it's different, you know?
My question is, my question was, I mean, does this guy inspect the Woodbury fast trash? Does he inspect?
Well, I think the problem is, we maintain, we maintain a certification there even though we no longer need one.
The other one's not, it's a cert.
And so, so why did we do that?
Why don't we?
Well, we can, we got need to just not renew it.
Yeah.
And.
Well, just get out of it.
But that's not the issue, that's not why residents are dumping there because we have a certification.
Residents are always.
It's why we're being inspected. And the inspection is legitimate. If people are dumping, they, they don't want to see that and if, we don't want to see that.
If we just had fast trash like they have in Woodbury and East Montpelier stuff, that doesn't require any kind of certification.
Then we wouldn't get inspected.
And what we have now does not require a certification.
So one of the things we could check out is getting rid of the certification?
Send a letter, but it, it still doesn't matter if, if they happened to buy and they saw illegal dumping, they saw illegal dumping on your property.
Right.
They'd write the same letter, you're dumping illegally.
Yeah.
People run burn barrels, they write them notices, same notices.
Yeah.
Well, on the fast track, I mean, it wasn't so much that you didn't have a place to do it. I think you were offering to do it at the school to help with that community connection.
Yeah, and also that, right, because it brings people to the school, you know, that normally wouldn't go to the school for any reason, another sense of using the school as part of the community.
That's a very good point.
So trash it all.
But you can have, you can have Girl Scout cookie sales and Boy Scout, whatever stuff going on at the same time. Bottle collections.
Truthfully, it's, I mean, it is a social event, I mean.
It is, I mean, you go to the dump, that's where you meet people, right?
Ask Ken Squier, he knows it.
Sharon?
No, I just, I think people have a different sense of accountability and responsibility when it comes to the school grounds and they do a quiet bend in the road that really nobody can see.
Yeah, so, sorry. Yeah, just as a, speaking as a resident of East Callis Village, moving the trash pickup to somewhere else doesn't solve the problem of people illegally dumping. So what's the, what's the idea?
We could put berms up at that point.
Yeah, and just close up the area.
And grass, just close that and grass it off, that's the other thing we discussed.
Guardrail or something. That's what I was, I was interested, I didn't believe that there wasn't a solution, I was just curious.
We don't need a parking lot there anymore.
Right.
The lovers can park somewhere else, it's not at the dump. And we can, we can actually make that, we actually talked about, like, or we can make that like a picnic area. It's actually not a terrible place to hang out. So you could also make that a nice little picnic area too.
A little park, park area?
And then the, another alternative, potential alternative, I'm sure it's probably been considered, but I know that the Callis Rec Association operates the rec field, which has a big parking lot that is not necessarily used for anything a lot of time.
Well, yeah, but originally, it was.
That's an alternative.
The community, with the school and the town working together, getting people to the school, like you said, who don't normally go there, there's a lot of opportunities to get people involved maybe in watching, you know, a sports event or something while they're there if there's something.
There's no sports events at the school, all the sports are happening at the rec field.
They could, right, they could use the live, I mean, I think if we're creative, there's a lot of ways to get people involved more with the school if they're taking their trash there.
And those school lots are maintained year round, those rec lots aren't necessarily.
I'm not sure.
That's true in the winter.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all, I mean, I can just see it there being more interaction.
And we need the compost bin.
Right. Scott?
I go with our new Saturday. Eighty percent of the people that come during the summer are from Woodbury, from Saban Valley.
Oh, even though they have their own track?
Yeah, no, they go, they, they go to there.
Hmm, okay, one more, one more comment, Gail, and then we're going to wrap things up.
It's my understanding that that property belongs to the Duainell Association?
Yeah.
The rec field?
The rec field, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it's leased to the CRA for a dollar a lifetime or something.
Right, but I think that's a consideration.
I think, you know, they're investigating.
I wasn't offering it as a, as a necessarily a place, I was offering it as a possible.
But I think this makes more sense.
Well, again, there's no plowing of the rec field, you couldn't get down there.
I mean, the town plows out the parking lot at the school already, so.
You know, you'd have to put the ramp in at the school, that takes up a lot of room.
I don't know why you have to have the ramp, they don't have the other.
So you can get to the recycling truck.
But they don't have that anywhere else, that ramp, at the trap, fast trash places.
That's how, well, that's how Brian Perry runs.
He's gonna have to change his operation if it doesn't work for us.
So, all right, I know we were going to talk about community engagement, but I don't think we have time. And that was kind of something Dot was on call for, so.
And she is out sick.
And she's out sick. So I wanted to thank the school board so much. I know you guys are busting your tails and we really appreciate it. And all the long hours and all the meetings and yet you came tonight and we really appreciate all your work.
Thanks for.
We appreciate your interest and the invitation, we would love to do it again.
Yeah, I mean, this is important, I mean, we're both doing town business and we're working in isolation on this. This is really great.
Well, we're gonna do it, you know, at least two or three times a year, I think. And if there is something you need from us as you're working on whatever, you know, you want to have some kind of joint document signed by the town and the school board, just let us know.
As this thing ramps up, if you need more meetings, just contact.
We will.
Just, just contact Denise and we'll just have a.
Right, or if you want us to attend, you want us to attend.
We'll attend your meetings.
Right, so just let us know. I think the communication lines are pretty good.
They're very good.
As far as the, the trash is concerned, I think we have a meeting coming up that we can, we have a full board meeting and we can talk about, get it on the agenda. And also just, because I want to make sure I'm on the record, I was in no way offering or suggesting that the rec field was a place to go, I was, I was.
It's all good stuff.
I was thinking about it as well.
Yes, it's already in the notes.
Yeah.
It's in the Times article, it's running.
I was gonna, I was gonna stick my mouth just like I have a paper.
But David, but David's gonna get this information correct this time, right? Okay.